Dawn Daniels, President and Chairman of the Upper Trichester Library. Thanks for having us here again today, and thanks for understanding our concerns and how much this township means to us and the library means to us and all of our people here within the community. We thank you for anything you can offer us, and we will definitely not let you down in whatever you do to help us out. And congratulations, Officer Smoke, to you. Blessings.
Anybody else from the right side of the room? Ms. Williams.
My name is Mary Williams. I've been a resident for 20 years, and I just want to mention that I'm retired from Widener School of Business, and while I was there, I was directing educational programs from the Small Business Development Center at Widener University. One of the things we did was go into communities and have classes for those who wanted to start a new business, classes for those who wanted to improve their marketing of their business, classes for those who needed accounting help for their business, and we always held these classes at libraries. And I could never come to Upper Chi because there wasn't room to have a class. So we gave the free classes at Township, Ridley, we gave the free classes in Haverford, and so forth and so on. But I just wish more people were realizing the full impact of a bigger library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anybody else from the right side? Yes, ma'am.
Just to add on that, in the last couple of months, I have spent about 10 hours in the communities on 452 for Heart and Soul. And I learned that they don't even come over this way because there's nothing for them, and they go to Aston Library, and then they stop in Aston to have lunch because we don't have the ability, we have the desire, but we don't have the ability to have classes for them, to have presentations, and have places where their children can run around and have fun and have learning at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Leslie Lane, 695 Cherry Tree Road in Upper Chi. I just wanted to add something to what I had said last month. When I went home, I was thinking about one of the things that so many libraries in this country have are areas where they can display artwork and the craft projects that the community is involved in. And I think it's an incredible booster to the community when they see that their artsy-fartsy citizens are being honored. And it also is an impetus for other children that maybe not know how to do something, to see something that they're interested in. And it's the first step in getting a child to be encouraged and to give them that possibility that they can do more than just play with their computers. And I don't know of a library in the area that doesn't, they have art, they have all kinds of displays to foster care and encouragement in the arts. And I think that's one thing that our community really and truly could do, a stand-up job. They have a lot of very talented kids in the elementary and high schools as well as the middle school, and not to mention all of the incredibly talented adults that are in Upper Chi Township. We have an amazing amount of very, very capable people doing incredible things, and this could be a wonderful showcase for them if we had the space.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody from the left side of the room would like to speak?
Yes, good evening. Barbara Massey. I'm at 4323 Somerset. I've been here for five years, and I'm really excited about being in the community, getting involved. But the library itself, for me, coming from a really small town up in the Poconos, we had library activities, after-school programs, and one thing that I didn't even really think about, as you mentioned, about craft arts and also displaying different things that children can do, and I think that's so important to this, to this community, in any community, because we want people to want to come into the community that have children, we want them to grow here, learn here, and having a library that right now might be small, but we could expand to something bigger, and I think that would be really a drawing point for so many people, as it was in a small little community where I was in a little town called Wengat, Pennsylvania. So I would just hope that we would be able to expand the library, do things for the community, get the community involved in what they really want, what programs are really important to them, and I'm just hoping that will come about.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else from the left side of the room? Anybody at all? Last call. All right, let the record show to no more sense of comments, and we will move on to our report, to our regular meeting. We'll start out with item number six. Have the approval of a minutes from the October 8, 2020 Board of Commissioner meetings and the October 29, 2020 Special Board of Commissioner meeting.
Second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried. Item number seven, can I have someone to make a motion for approving a change order, number one, with A.J. Jerick incorporation for the Cates Glen Improvement Project in the amount of $44,448.
Second it.
So motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number eight, have someone to consider a resolution authorizing a release from the Boto Group escrow accounts to A.J. Jerick incorporation for the Cates Glen Improvement Project in the amount of $13,189.14.
Second it.
So motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2020-45.
Item number nine, have someone make a motion to consider a resolution authorizing a release from the Boto Group escrow accounts to A.J. Jerick incorporation for the Cates Glen Improvement Project in the amount of $80,583.50.
Second it.
So motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2020-46.
Item number 10, have someone to make a motion to consider a resolution authorizing a release of the grading escrow account of 111 Jennifer Way.
Second it.
Motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
That is Resolution 2020-47.
Item number 11 on the agenda, have someone to make a motion to consider authorizing the Township Solicitor to send a letter to Alvaro Costa of the Costa Homes informing him of the Township position that he is in default of his developer's agreement with Upper Chi Township on the project known as Creekside Phase 3.
Second it.
So motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, and motion is carried. Item number 12 on the agenda, have someone to consider making a motion authorizing the advertising of a hearing for December 10, 2020 at 6:45 p.m. to solicit comments on an ordinance that will be in front of the Board of Commissioners to vacate an unnamed alleyway that runs from Columbia Avenue to the interstate of I-95.
Second it.
So motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number 13 on the agenda, have someone to consider a motion authorizing the advertising of an ordinance to vacate an unnamed alleyway that runs from Columbia Avenue to the interstate of I-95.
Second.
So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number 14 on the agenda, have someone to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of James Renner on the planning commission.
Second.
So motion in the second. Any comments?
I already mentioned to George that I would like the township to send a letter thanking him for his service on the planning commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes, I think the whole board would agree with that, and personally, I'd like to thank Mr. Renner for his years of service also. He served very, he served many years on the planning board as chairman, so thank you, Mr. Renner, for your years of service. With that said, I'd like to turn over the motions to Mr. Joe Vacco.
Consider our motion to authorize the purchase from the Capital Reserve Fund for Dura Deck Matting from NAR Sales Company Incorporated in the amount of $6,486.24, and that's Co-Stor's pricing.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider our motion approving payment request, number one, from Eagle Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $110,058.75 for the Jennifer Way Basin Stormwater Project.
So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider our motion approving payment request, number one, from A.F. Damon Incorporated in the amount of $429,966.11. It was a 2020 Township program with $12,950 coming from the county and then the general fund, and the balance from the local fuels fund.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a resolution authorizing Michael Vodio, so President, Board of Commissioners, to sign all documents related to the maintenance agreement, number 0631163, for various public improvements associated with the Bethel and Millroads Roundabout Project with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Question. George, where are we start date on that, or Lisa?
The left knee is set now for, is the weight on the cable?
Okay. It's coming.
We have one more.
You have one more, yeah.
When we vote on it?
Oh, question.
Okay, so there's a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? There's no opposed, the ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider our motion accepting maintenance agreement, number 0631163, for various public improvements associated with the Bethel and Millroads Roundabout Project with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Motion in the second. No comments. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Number 20, Vice Chairman.
Thank you. Consider a motion accepting the resignation from Gail King from the Southern Delaware County Authority Board, S.A.S.O. Authority.
Second it.
So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. I'd just like to thank Gail. She's a good friend, she has a good, she's a great listener also, so she will be sorely missed, but thank you, Gail, for your years of service.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that and just say thank you for your services to Township. She volunteered in a few different capacities within the Township, and so due to health reasons, she had to resign, so she will be missed, you know, she will be missed all over, so, so thank you, Gail, for your service to Upper Chi Township and for stepping up when I needed, and, you know, to appoint someone to the, to the board, and I will be looking for a replacement. Her resignation is effective December 31 of 2020, so replacement, looking for someone to be appointed as of January 1 of 2020 to fill the last year of her term, that appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thanks. Consider a motion accepting the resignation of Judy Stang from the Recreation Committee.
So motion in the second. Any comments? Again, I just want to thank Judy. She's been a great supporter of the Township, and I'd like to thank her for her dedication with the Rec Board. So there's a motion in the second, I believe. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
And also Judy, she currently was a volunteer, again, with several different capacities within the Township. She resigned so that she could focus her energies and efforts for the heart and soul that she's a part of on that leadership team, so she'll, she's not going anywhere, she's just...
Moving her out.
She's moving her out, again. Consider a motion granting a Fury Road Fieldhouse Fee Reduction waiver request for, what is it, Hurkins Pickle Ball Club.
Second it.
What, Hurkins? Hurkins? Hurkins Pickle Ball Club.
So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the advertising of a hearing for December 10, 2020 at 7:05 p.m. to solicit comments on the Upper Chi Township's 2020 Community Development Block Grant application.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, Commissioner Whitaker. Commissioner Edward Kowski.
I only have one, thank God. I'm sure. Let me keep going here. I'm here to accept a proposal of CH Planning for the creation of a Boothwin Town Center Plan.
Second. Any comments?
Yeah, I did read through the three, it was, I didn't get to the other 57, but I did read through, and I think this was pretty thorough and pretty complete with their presentation. Thanks.
I'd like to make a comment. It wasn't easy. I mean, this is a project that we got a certain amount of grant money on it, some were a little higher or whatever, but it was quite a few, but a lot of it with the CH planning, with the recommendations or the references, is very well Delaware County oriented. A lot of plans, they did our comprehensive plan with Aston, the 2035 Plan for the Delaware County, Morton Plan, which was in the report, so there's, there's a lot of good. We have the committee. I'm excited about this for everybody, and hopefully we can improve the Boothwin Town Center for us.
Thank you. So the motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. And we'll finish off with Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Consider a motion authorizing the advertising of an ordinance establishing an other post-retirement employment's benefit trust fund.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the advertise, advertising of an ordinance setting the 2021 fee for collection of trash, garbage, and refuse materials in the amount of $220.
Second it.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the advertising of an ordinance setting the 2021 real estate tax millage, the rate to be revenue neutral for Upper Chi Township, and to be determined based on the forthcoming assessment of value coming from Delaware County. So move.
Second.
So motion in the second. Are there any comments?
Just a quick question. Is this not creating a special meeting at the end of the year, or we don't know that?
Yeah, the hope is that they, that the county will be giving us the number December 1st or 2nd, which will allow us to adopt the budget the 10th of December. We've already, the budget to establish the millage, excuse me. Sorry.
Thank you.
If you come after the second, we will act.
Thank you. So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a resolution approving the release of contingency escrow to the Upper Chi Township General Fund in the amount of $52,367.33.
Second it.
So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lightzel and Economies P.C. for the 2021 compilation audits in the amount not to exceed $8,500.
Second.
So motion in the second. Any comments?
Yes. Can Joe just read through all these and we just vote at the end? They're all for pretty much the same thing. Does anybody got a problem?
You probably should need to do them individually because they're, they're separate proposals for each separate audit.
Okay. I tried.
I thought of that, I thought of that this afternoon when I looked at them, but then I realized they're all for different things.
All right, so we're on 29. There's a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lightzel and Economies P.C. for 2020 Tax Collector Audit in the amount of $3,000.
Second.
So motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
They just want to see me battle up on Economies.
Just four more to go.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lightzel and Economies P.C. for 2020 Township Audit in the amount of $17,200.
Second.
So motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lightzel and Economies P.C. for 2020 Police Pension Plan Audit in the amount of $4,300.
Second.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lightzel and Economies P.C. for 2020 Non-Uniform Defined Benefit Pension Plan Audit in the amount of $4,300.
Second.
Motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Lightzel and Economies P.C. for a 2020 Non-Uniform Defined Contribution Plan Audit in the amount of $2,900.
Second.
So motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the placement of a temporary handicap parking only sign at 1606 McKay Avenue.
Second it.
Motion in the second. Any comments on this one? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion authorizing the Solicitor to prepare an ordinance setting the tax collector salary.
Second.
So motion in the second. Are there any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of $1,155,132.35.
Second it.
So motion in the second. Any comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you to the board for reading through these patiently. With that said, we'll move on to our Commissioners and Professional reports. Let's start off with our Professionals, and we'll start off with Mr. Mike Pierce.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for indulging me to be at the meeting remotely today. My report is on file. We took care of all the action items that were related to items for the next month, mostly public hearings and ordinances. We're in pretty good shape with that. As I indicated at the caucus meeting, I appeared on behalf of the Township for the application of the zoning hearing board for 2,300 Market Street for the erection of a new sign. The board indicated that they were opposed to that. We appeared, and the zoning hearing board found in our favor and denied the application. The appeal period is not quite run yet, but the findings of patent collisions of law are being prepared. The other zoning hearing for 3,300 Market Street has been postponed to the December zoning hearing board, and I will appear on behalf of the Township for that matter. Pretty much all the other matters are routine in nature, and as I indicated, all the action items were taken care of in the regular course of business.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Is any questions for our Solicitor from the board? If there's no questions from our board, we'll move on to our Engineers' Report. Ms. Lisa Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have talked to the board, and we have the office, because one of the 34, like something like 10,000, we're going on, policy completed, and we've got our store on, and so, residents should be aware that there may be delays along Chi Chester Avenue, meeting house two, is the going to start putting some of that storage system in, to have a smaller management system, they could, I don't have the schedule on that at this point, but I'm assuming that that is going to happen. But I mentioned that once I have an idea of when that's going to happen, I'll advise the manager, and he can... Cates Glen, the only ones remaining with Cates Glen is A.J. Jordan going into the basin, and of course, I'm hoping that once it dries out a little bit, we'll be able to get in there, and still down the basin, that's the last piece of project that we can do. The Mount Pleasant Church of the Towne with the, place, so that project physically is finished, however, I'm waiting for the test results of the lighting, since once I have that, we'll be able to, with those funds. The Auto Zone, we received work today that they are preparing the plans for recording. I believe that Mr. Pierce has the agreements, and they are with the donors being signed currently, so that project should be moving once we have a reconstruction meeting with the Delaware County Preservation District in our offices. The Creekside Village, Mr. Costa, it still has not completed the driveway, one driveway that has not been undermined as part of, I believe it's lack of action when that project was completed, and I did hear from the COA, my report says that I'm waiting approval. They had some changes in the locations of the tree, Mr. Costa has a tree too. The Little Rock Park House is moving along. I was hoping that landscaping would be done in Rain Garden, that's right across the street from our Bergdahl Rain Garden. I believe that that probably will not happen, the city will not happen in the spring, a hundred percent, but they are under root, so I'm assuming that they'll be completed before the next full season, as we follow. We had a meeting yesterday with the energy partners, trying to get the easement resolved with them, so we can start a street and state project along Chi Chester Avenue, and we'll definitely hear from them shortly. I have about 90% of the Bergdahl Park grant reimbursement form, said final report that the fees requiring as part of that grant completed, we should have that completed this week. We're currently working on a list of projects for community development block grant with a hearing, and I'll get that out to you approximately soon before the meeting. And I'll get that out to you approximately soon before the meeting. Then we have the opportunity to take a look. I have some other sketches of projects that we've done in past that we're going through. Because it's part of a new block grant. Otherwise, I can report several progress. Items that we've already taken care of as part of the actuary.
Thank you. Any questions for our township engineer?
Yeah, I have one. Lisa, can we get a map? I think you sent it to us or just a description of the new CDVG area? Because it expanded a little this year.
It, it has not been extended. It's changed from previous years though.
Alright.
I'll send that along with the list.
Okay.
The only, the one comment I have is I hand-delivered the updated zoning map to our zoning officer earlier last week. I asked them, I left word with the secretary, Lisa, to please have Charlie review it and to contact you if there's any other discrepancies or any other things he might think need to be changed. I didn't inform him. I believe that that zoning map that we just got recently done is up to date. Correct?
Yeah.
Great. Have you heard from him?
I haven't.
Alright, thank you. If there's no other questions for our township engineer, we'll move on to our township manager, Mr. George Needles.
All in for your file. Just a general continuous. See if you have anything. What's going on right now?
Any questions for our township manager?
One quick one. George, how we, did the RFP go out for the LRTA yet? We got it out this year and?
Yeah, talk to Bart today. We'll sit down and discuss a few things.
Okay.
So the questions or comments for our township manager? We'll move on to our commissioner's report and we'll start off with our vice chairman, Mr. Joe Baco.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Highway and sanitation. See that the one we passed the approval to buy the mats we discussed last week in caucus for the highway department. Street lighting, traffic signals. The only thing I have to report there is we're still waiting to, for some parts to put a light up on. Territory room for them people waiting. Sewer water and utilities. Once again, I'd like to echo what Michael and Nicole said about Gail King. Thanks for the service on the board and all the, all the other stuff she does. And all reports for that are on file.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Baco? That will move on to Commissioner Whitaker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Our Parks and Recreation Report. We had for the month of October, six rentals. The dollar mile collected was $4,710. Our community service building, we had seven rentals, collected $3,500 for a total collected of $8,285. So the rec department has been busy during COVID. The Heart and Soul, November report for Heart and Soul. They have ended stage 3.3. They're right now going to verify value statements based on surveys, child chats, neighborhood community days, comments from emails, websites, and discussions. Phase four, after verifying the con, the statements, recording and prioritizing action items. Phase four would be the final, time for the final summit. This stage finalizes the action plan with a presentation to all groups, including the Board of Commissioners. It includes a presentation of the final action. This will be set at a Board of Commissioners meeting to be determined. Our grants. So it looks like we're awaiting a decision on our recycling program. Evaluation for DEP technical assistance. This amount is $7,956. The comprehensive recreation park and open space and greenway plans grant. Projected project cost was $80,000. This grant, we were awarded $40,000 for that grant. And I already mentioned the resignation from our, from our recreation, which is Judy. I think that's all I have for my, for my committees. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll come back under new business.
Alright.
Okay. If there's no questions for Commissioner Whitaker, we'll move on to Commissioner Ed Rakowski.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the chief. I don't see him here. He stepped out for the temporary handicap on McKay Avenue requested from a resident. Parking issues over there. The medic unit, the report's on file with that. George and I, we had to set up a meeting with the fire marshal so we could get, be on the same page for these meetings and our reports and other issues in the township. The CDVG, I already talked to Lisa about the fire department's doing very well still. They're still out of one location. We'll, we'll go through the next step when there's a hiccup over there. When they start, next spring is when I was told for the, any kind of work in front of the firehouse. But everything's doing well over there. Emergency management, as usual. When there's nothing going on, there's always something going on with them. I want to thank them with that because as we sit home, they were monitoring two, two hurricanes in October. You have two tropical storms in November and there's always something going on. Facebook, they always put stuff on for the emergency management team. Their vest for the, thank God we don't have to use them. The safety vest for the members team have been ordered and are delivered already. So everybody's doing pretty well. Hopefully after COVID, we could start doing some tabletop training for the commissioners, the fire department, and emergency management team. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up underneath my report since the Boothland Town Center is going to be moving forward a little bit, is I have a concern on the wall that's being presented on the plan for the town center. It has, or I would like to see, my feeling is, it says, Booth, welcome to Upper Chichester Township, Boothland Town Center. But when I got to design, it has an emblem of our town, like a street sign in the bottom corner. In my opinion, I would like to see that removed. If you look at the wall out front here where it says Upper Chichester Township Building, there's nothing on there. The street sign should be on a street sign, not a welcome sign. I just, I'm requesting to have it removed. I don't know where it came from. It came towards the end of the planning. I just don't think it looks right. I mean, that's my opinion. I would like to see it, that little emblem removed. Everything else stays there. It still says, Welcome to Upper Chichester Township, Boothland Town Center. But I think the emblem belongs on a street sign, not a welcome sign coming down.
So, go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah.
Yes. So we would, I think it's to the consensus of the board not to have that included in the wall.
On the wall.
On the wall.
I mean, it still went there, Welcome to Upper Chichester, Boothland Town Center. Okay, thank you. And we're, and then the other thing on that project is, I don't know when it's going to happen. I know it's coming shortly, but, and we're going to do it very gingerly because everybody's concerned about that World War I monument. We have two people coming out pro bono for us because this is a monument that's been there forever. And they don't know how it's secured. George and I were talking earlier, it's probably, they're going to probably dig around that whole thing, almost to Chi Avenue probably, hypothetically. I would love to see if there was a, what do they call that? George, you talk, a time capsule underneath there. I don't know what's underneath that thing. The concern is if there's dowels on the monument going through the foundation. The contractor, he, he found somebody. I have somebody I know personally that worked at it. My aunt worked at Chester Rural and they dealt with, these people are coming out so we could, they're getting ready to move it and they don't want it moved far. So we don't destroy it. And just the contractor's nervous. I said, we are all because we don't know what's going to happen, so.
Can we, can we do some radar penetration, detection, underground radar penetration? Just, just to see.
The residents of the area? Or? Well, yeah, I brought that to the attention of Putt. What we would like to see, and I, and I didn't, I didn't, this is the first time I hear about the residents that formerly owned it. Do they want it back or would they mind if we move it over to the Ogden Schoolhouse?
I mean, we, if they reach back, so we got a random call that someone, I donated this. I want to make sure that we have it. So I, I would say that if we're repurposing them somewhere else in the township, we're not.
I would get up with Putt because I think the easiest thing to do is they cut it from the base and just get a new sleeve for it and still keep the pole. But the Putt suggestion at that time was to move it over to the Ogden School. So we still keep it. We had no need of it. We could let the earners know that or it's up to you guys. I think that would be a good, good gesture to send it over to the schoolhouse if they want it.
Yeah.
And let the historical society take it over?
Yeah, clean it up and just put some new anchors on it or the pulleys and stuff like that, so. They have a place for it? Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll get the opinion for the two marker people and see if we have to go that direction to see what's underneath with any X-ray or whatever it does down there. I don't know. We're just keeping our fingers crossed because we want to keep it in one piece, so. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Rakowski? That will move on to Commissioner Joe Neary.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like just to report that the financials are available in the office as well as the tax collection reports. The police report is also available in the township building. There were no trash refunds. I just wanted to mention that. And I did get a request from Creekside to restrict parking on one side of Irwin Road. And I want to talk to them first because if we do it, I want to do it by ordinance. So there's no problem with the police enforcing it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Neary? That will wrap up with my report. There were two items I wanted to mention last week. I guess we can bring it under, under new business. They'll just be two quick items. I believe Mr. Pierce went over all those, any zoning at, at the last meeting. So I really don't have anything new to report on tonight. So other than that, Ed, I mentioned earlier that we have reached out to the urgent care and we're waiting, we reached out to the developer who's interested in putting the urgent care in at the corner meeting house in Chi Avenue. I talked to Ms. Kelly today. We're still waiting to get some word back from them. And we will keep on pursuing it. Other than that, I don't have anything else new to report. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I, I just have one thing, but no, I appreciate that with the urgent care. I do believe that Upper Chinese and urgent care, not to lose it. But I, I do have a suggestion for the board to think over and nothing for tonight. I think on your construction committee, which is very, very well, with, with Joe V. and Mike and the committee they have, to give a business an opportunity to see if there's something Upper Chi wants or where to go with it. My concern is, I think, I feel that if there's a plan coming in in one of our wards, that one of the other two commissioners should step away just for, if the, if that commissioner in that ward would like to be presented or there at the construction committee since it's in their ward. There's no decisions. All it is, is recommendations to any of these builders or the families or businesses. But I feel that the commissioner that's getting, going in front of the construction committee should be that person in that ward to know what's going on. I, I feel that. Not to take you away from it, Joe. I mean, if, and then if the other commissioner says, you know, I don't need to be there, then you guys are going to do your job anyway, so. It's, it's a good thing we started. We never did it before. I'm not saying take it away. What I'm saying is involve the commissioner that the project's in the ward. And you can't include it because then you have three commissioners who would have to advertise it. Just think about it.
Yeah, I, I definitely would like to think about it.
Alright, you're done. One minute.
I understand it's just.
Yeah, I know.
I'm good either way. Alright, so at this moment, I'd like to bring up new business. So I have two quick things. On election day, I had some residents come up to me with some traffic concerns on Holiday Am and Boothland Road. I meant to report on them last week. I did not. So I'm just, maybe I would like to reach out to our engineer and our police department to see what possible scenarios, if any required, can take place on those roads. So with that said, if there's any other new business, we will entertain it at this point in time. And I'll turn over to Commissioner Whitaker.
Thank you. So under new business, I'd like the board to consider the resolution for the agreement between Upper Chichester Township and the Upper Chichester Library. I'll read the resolution. Whereas the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners concur with the August 2018 feasibility study produced by Catania Engineering that the parcel with the folio number 09-00-03-034-01, better known as Kingsman Park, would be a suitable location for a public library. And whereas the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners agree to serve, excuse me, agree to reserve that land for the future construction of a public library by Upper Chichester Township Library. And whereas the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners agrees to this reservation contingent on the memorandum of understanding being approved by both the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners and the Upper Chichester Library Board that outlines the appropriate financial and operational goals as well as a timeline for construction. And whereas the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners agree that if a mutually, mutually approved memorandum of understanding is not approved by both boards and/or the guidelines and timelines established in the memorandum of understanding are not met, the reservation of that land will be terminated and the use of the property will revert back to its current state as an outdoor park or any other use the Board of Commissioners sees fit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Upper Chichester Board of Commissioners do reserve the parcel with the folio number 09-00-03-034-01, better known as Kingsman Park, for the future construction of a public library contingent on the terms set forth and further defined in the forthcoming memorandum of understanding duly adopted the 12th day of November 2020, Upper Chichester, excuse me, Township of Upper Chichester.
There's a motion in a second. Are there any comments? So just, this resolution still has to go through another process of meeting with the library and coming with an understanding of what Ms. Whitaker said about financial operation goals and construction timelines. So I had sent out an email earlier this week asking for the board to meet with the library with our solicitor so we could work this stuff out and have it within the resolution. The board has chosen to go this route. I still, I have reservations about it because if I'm, if I'm an investor, I'm going to want to know what the contingencies are. So I still want to meet with you guys. I still want to go over the contingency plans. Me personally, my vote tonight is going to be no. But I still want to meet. I want us to agree on the, on the contingency to, to move forward with it. That's, that's. That's, 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 that's me personally, so. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's myself. So the motion is carried four to one. Congratulations. And I would still like to meet and, and, uh, and talk and hopefully we, we need to come up with an agreement still. Just everybody's clear. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Yep. Let me get with George and we'll, 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 we'll pick a date. I want to, I have to talk to Mike Pierce and try to get a date also. All right. Thank you. Congratulations and, uh, have a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, uh-huh.